In honor of your son, who is no longer abroad. He's back here in the United States.
Yes.
First Lieutenant.
First Lieutenant.
Give him our personal thanks. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, that now takes us into our agenda. And first we have board comments. Let me see if I have any members of the board who would like to supervise or appoint.
That might be a little hard. Thank you, Mr. Orsner. Test. I'd like to just take a minute to recognize the fact that Coachella Valley is proud to be the home of Timothy Bradley, the new WBO welterweight title holder. And a really close decision in Las Vegas. He's passionately referred to as the Desert Storm in our valley. And we were very pleased to welcome him home and congratulate him on his success. We are scheduled to be the grand marshal of the county fair parade last December. Something about a fight and some training came up. We're hoping that after his next successful defense, he'll be back and maybe he'll be the grand marshal next December. But we're very, very proud to welcome Timothy Bradley back home after his trip to Vegas.
Thank you, Supervisor Benoit. Any others? All right, I see no others. Mr. Orsner.
Hey. I want to thank all the department heads and the staff members of Mr. Corser. Achieving the budget goals yesterday, it's a moving target. There's a lot of hard work that goes behind it. So I want to thank you for all the department heads and admin managers and everybody that sharpens their pencils to make that happen for us. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. One thing we notice with these mics, just for everybody, there is a slight delay because of -- so you have to, until they get them adjusted correctly, you have to keep speaking. And sometimes there's a delay until you talk because of some special digital instrumentation they have on it to control the sound. Right. I have no comments on the budget, but I'm sure we will hear today or the next day on what the legislature is going to be doing in terms of the governor's budget. We hear that they're $2 billion apart, the legislature, and that the -- there aren't enough cuts that are being made to deal with this. I'll do my best to keep this microphone active. See, I can't pause without you not hearing me. Maybe that's good. So with that, I'm going to go into corrections, additions, and deletions to the -- arc.
Is it turning to him?
No. Just keep talking, Cherry. You should be picked up.
Okay. We have additions to item 2.9, 2.10, 3.9, 2.3. deletions of items 2.2, 2.8, and 3.13.
I'll move those corrections and additions. Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Ashley, please vote. Motion is unanimous. I assume that included our consent calendar, our admin calendar, consent calendar, was that the --
Oh, but I'll move those now.
A motion and a second for you. I did want to point out, Mr. Freeman, are you here on 2.8 today? Did you wish to wait until July to sing the Camp Canadian National Anthem?
I think you ought to practice now.
You're welcome to come up today in honor of the Canadian Day and otherwise we'll have you up here at first meeting in July. It's the key of C.
He brought the whole thing up.
In the key of C, we expect you to be prepared. All right. Our admin action calendar and consent calendar have been approved. Now that takes us to our policy calendar. We'll be pulling item 310. There are a number of speakers on that. Any items may members of the board to be pulled. Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we could pull item 3.19 for comment. 3.19. I've got a number of cards here, so let me just get -- 3.9 also, 3.18. Mine was 3.19. Did I get that right? 1.9, I'm sorry. Supervisor Stone.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you could please pull 3.2 and 3.17 and 3.43.
3.17 and 3.43.
Item 3.42, I like the -- I'm going to explain this before we move.
Right. Is there a way you can -- are they dealing with the sensitivity on these?
Right.
Okay. I just want to go back and confirm the items that have been pulled. And correct me if I'm wrong. 3.2 Supervisor Stone, 3.10, lots of speakers. 3.17 Supervisor Stone, 3.18 is best to speak. 3.1, Benoit. Hey, can you just have him turn on the -- this?
The microphone.
This one? There we go. Good. All right. That one doesn't seem to be muted. So I'm going to use this as we go through the agenda. And if we have issues here, we will pass it down to my colleagues. So first item Supervisor Stone, 3.2. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we go to that, let's call for a motion on the remainder of the calendar. A motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Now to item 3.2 Supervisor Stone. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we have a number of health care plans within the state of California to deliver health care to indigent, low-income population. And I have a concern that here we are creating another health plan, creating another bureaucracy in the state of California, when I believe we have the coverage through existing plans necessary to deliver health care to our indigent population. This is a very partisan bill. It has no support from the Republican side of the aisle. And I don't intend to make it a partisan issue here today, but I can't support the growth in state government to provide a service where we already have other health agencies within the state to provide it. For those reasons, I don't support Senate Bill 703. My Senator Hernandez would urge the board to not support it. It's been laying into suspense for, I believe, nine months already. And in all likelihood, it's probably going to die without ever coming forward for a vote on the floor. So I would urge us not to support this. And Medical takes the responsibility for providing the insurance for the indigent and low-income population of our state.
Okay. All right. Thank you Supervisor Stone. Any further comments on item 3.2? Can we hear from -- yes, Mr. Bagley.
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the public address system. We'll do our best to just deal with it today. I recognize that we have a ton of speakers here today on this particular item. So just please bear with us.
Good morning. Doug Bagley, Riverside County Regional Medical Center. I guess first let me say that we've not been looking at this from a patriotism perspective. I wasn't really aware of what you just conveyed in that regard. So the basic health plan is an option that states have within the construct of the federal health reform law. So that law creates two new forms of coverage for people. For populations with incomes between 0 and 133% of the federal poverty level, they would go into the federal Medicaid program. For populations 133% and above federal poverty level, they would go into the new health benefits exchange. When you overlay that onto the county's current medically indigent services program, it covers the population of 0 to 200% of federal poverty level. So of the county's current medically indigent services program, the 0 to 133 portion would go into the new Medicaid expansion. The 133 to 200 portion would go into the new health benefits exchange. An option that states have under the new law is they can create something called a basic health plan for the 133 to 200% population. And they can move them from the health benefits exchange into the Medical Managed Care Plans, which for our jurisdictional area, the two plans would be either Inland Empire Health Plan or Molina Health Plan. Now, if the state chooses the option of a basic health plan and moves that 133 to 200 population into the Medical Managed Care Plans, then it changes the insurance subsidy support, which that 133 to 200 population gets. So under the federal health reform law, the population up to 400% of federal poverty level receives some subsidies for their insurance premiums in the benefit exchange. If the state chooses to implement the basic health plan, the amount of subsidy for the 133 to 200 population increases. So our thinking was that would increase the likelihood that the 133 to 200 population would actually get the insurance coverage and that we would get reimbursement for that population. So that was our rationale. That was our thinking in why we were finding the basic health plan to be an attractive option. Now, I wasn't thinking about some of the other considerations that you brought forward, in all honesty. So, you know, so there --
Okay. I'll see if my first. Here.
Director Bagley, this, whichever way it goes, of course, if it goes into existing systems that are already in place, I know the Inland Empire Health Plan, as they expand, they're able to actually keep down their administrative overhead because they can do a much better job with more members. And also isn't it geared to try to get in earlier with these prospective patients and try to keep them well so that they're not going to hospitals and urgent care centers for episodic care and they get some kind of overall management of their health and with an emphasis on prevention?
Yes, and I think I would also add just to, you know, just to make sure you're fully informed of some of the issues in this debate. So by virtue of increasing the amount of subsidy for this lower-income population, it would have the effect of reducing the amount of subsidy for the higher-income population in that range of 133 to 400% of federal poverty population. So that is part of the debate on this issue, is it does, you know, it does shift the balance of where the, you know, where the amount of subsidy support goes.
Okay, but from a purely county perspective, and particularly from your perspective, it would be in a perspective to support the county's operations with more dollars and help you pay for what is now unreimbursed care.
Well, that was kind of our thinking. Our thinking was it would increase the probability that we would actually get coverage of the lowest income group.
All right, Doug. This is part of the ACAーパートन Care Act.
Correct.
And that may be determined in the next couple of weeks as to its viability or whether it be upheld or not.
So that's true also. This could be a moot discussion in a week or two.
It could be. So and if it is in suspense, I'm wondering if it -- first let me ask if CSAC has taken a position on this.
I don't know if CSAC's taken a position on it.
I'm just wondering if it would hurt to -- that's okay. Go ahead. Come on. CSAC. I should know, but I don't.
Morning Supervisors. Alex Gann with the Executive Office. The CSAC Health and Human Services Committee did support this order.
Okay. I would suggest then until CSAC entire board takes a position on this, just because it made it past the committee, we may want to look at it from a statewide level and let it go to the full board once it does that. So, yes, I'm sorry Supervisor Benoit.
Have you any indication that this rule's going to move in the near future? It hasn't had any actions since July 5th, 2011.
Well, I don't know all the reasons behind that, but it hasn't, you know, it hasn't been a priority because the benefits exchange didn't exist. And so the benefits exchange has now been created. So the wheels are starting to move about creating this system. So that's why it's coming up as an issue because there'll have to be a decision made in the not-too-distant future about what the state's going to do.
I think the chair was going to recommend we hold off on action and support that.
That's correct. I would just move that we put this, take it off calendar for the moment until we see what further action is taken as part of CSAC and then also where the courts end up in the next, I guess, three weeks maximum we should hear. So, yeah. All right. Okay. That's fine. I'll make that motion. Thank you. So thank you, Doug. Supervisor Bestor and Supervisor Ashley. Okay. Motion is unanimous. That now takes us to item -- I'm going to skip 310 for now and go to the other items so we can get those, get through those. First item, 3.17 Supervisor Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an agreement potentially to go to prevent child abuse in Riverside County Peacock without security competitive bids. And of course, this is a very important service in our county. And in the past seven years that I've been on the board, my staff and I have had very little, if any, interaction with Peacock. I have met with Susan Lowe that shared my concern that we're not sure, you know, if we're getting our money's worth with this organization. And I believe it's pretty, it's always healthy to put things out to bid, to find out who else is out there to provide these important services. And for that reason, I hope the board will join me in putting this out to bid. Excuse me. Hopefully, the board will join me in putting this out to bid to make sure that we have a responsible bidder that we can depend on to help curb child abuse in Riverside County. So I would like to make the motion. And again, if Susan Lowe's here, she can certainly chime in on our discussions that we've had, but I would recommend that we put this out to bid.
Okay. Susan.
Good morning, members of the board. Susan Lowe with the Department of Public Social Services. I was pleased to have a discussion with Supervisor Stone, and it's a unique service that we're requesting here, but it certainly is one that we can put out to bid. The only thing I would ask that there be consideration for is possibly approving the contract before you at this time. Allow us to proceed with an RFP if that is the board's desire, and then we can come back at a future date with updates as a result of that RFP process.
Susan, how many other agencies are there like this out there that could impact, provide this service?
Well, with our limited information available about the composition specifically nonprofits in our community, we're not really clear who is in a position to step up and meet all of the welfare and institution code requirements. But that would be something that we could certainly reveal more clearly through an RFP process. That would be one of the fundamental components, is that they meet the welfare and institution code requirements, both on composition and their ability to support their child abuse prevention requirements locally and the collaboratives specifically.
Okay. Any further comments by members of the board? Supervisor Benoit.
This contract is scheduled to go into effect July 1st.
Yes.
With less than a month between that operational date and today, what impacts would there be if we were to hold off on this as requested to do an RFP? How long would it take?
An RFP process typically would take the better part of four to six months. So it really wouldn't be practical without some disruption in services. So that's why I was recommending that we proceed with the contract as it is presented to you today with an RFP process to follow post-est.
Okay. All right. Further comments, I would move that we proceed with the contract today and then you come back with an RFP process. Motion and a second, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to item 3.18, Mr. Grant. 3.18.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and our esteemed members of all. I question this issue of Economic Development Agency by virtue of the fact that we are now going outside of the agency to get the information on appraisals of property. In the past performances, I've noticed that the RDA, the disasters that have occurred in the financial developments and the cost and the value of those properties when they resell at the moment right now makes me feel that this economic development needs an oversight. And I've mentioned this before, I have a tendency to call this the Economic Disaster Agency rather than Development Agency by virtue of the cost that is being created here. The principle of the appraisals of these properties, there is no expression of oversight for this Economic Development Agency. And I think you have to have a doctor's degree in understanding of communication of financial establishments, and there appears to be none here. It's just an automatic acceptance. Could you tell me before I accept the fact that this is qualified, that these are indeed genuine, honest, integral people that are dealing with this situation? Because it's very important that we don't lose. And when we resell these properties, obviously, they got to purchase them for a reason of development, which we know nothing of. And in the past, I had very little trust in this agency. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grant. All right. This is basically just a pre-qualified approval list for appraisal services through Economic Development Agency as part of the MSP program, a neighborhood stabilization program. And again, there's no contract with any of the appraisers listed, just a pre-qual requirement. So with that, I will approve. Should I -- and a second, please. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to item 3.19 Supervisor Benoit.
We have an item for us here that is part of our moving forward on the Thermal Race Club in Thermal, California. It is a big project. It'll have some curves in the track. It's had some curves in the process. Mr. Allen is here, I think, representing the developers. I want to recognize his diligence in coming today and just say we're working on it and we appreciate your continuing. This is going to be a terrific asset in the Coachella Valley. I move approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Item 3.19, please vote. Supervisor Ashley. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to item 3.43 Supervisor Stone. We do have one speaker, Paul Jacobs. We'll go to Supervisor Stone first.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. We have heard concerns from our constituents about coming to board meetings and paying for parking. And in all the years that I served in the Temecula City Council, you know, we always wanted to ensure that anyone that wanted to come and speak before the board or the city council at that time was able to do so at no charge. I think it's all part of transparency. And it certainly hit a chord with me, with Mr. Jacobs' argument, that we should be providing validated parking for anybody that wants to come to the county administration center, take time away from their jobs, take time away from their families, and at least have the right to be here without having to rush to a parking meter out on the street or ensuring that we have enough parking, both for handicapped people, which I think we've addressed, and for those that would like to testify at board meetings. I don't think this is going to be a tremendous hit to our general fund, but nobody said that, you know, democracy was cheap. Democracy could be expensive, but it must be protected. And we must be able to ensure people's first amendment rights as they come and express their opinions on issues before their respective board representatives. So I've brought forward, this is a park waiver program, that the Executive Office and working with maybe facilities management at the clerk of the board can come up with a program where we can, in a very easy way, validate parking for those that come before the board of supervisors. And I hope that the board will join me in waiving these parking fees.
All right. Supervisor Stone, thank you. Mr. Jacobs.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, County staff, and members of the public. My name is Paul Jacobs from Temecula. Supervisor Stone, thank you for putting this item on the agenda and taking this action that promotes citizens' access to government. From the time I -- From the time I first saw you many years ago on the Temecula City Council, two things have remained consistent, your gift of gab and your creative use of acronyms. I like acronyms too, and park waiver is good, but I was thinking of something more along the lines of parking allowed under law. I kid. But seriously, politicians are known to be good talkers, but rare are those that demonstrate skills of listening. With enthusiastic appreciation for the recommended motion, I respectfully request that the language be broadened to include all public meetings held at the County Administration Center and for the ease of administration, only apply it to the parking structure outside this building. I also request that parking validation be included for people just coming to observe the process of government and not be restricted to those addressing the Board or speaking at a meeting. The public reserves the right to remain silent and you'd probably like it when we do. Thank you again for your anticipated passage of the motion and consideration of the suggested changes. Supervisor Stone, thank you for hearing a constituent and putting this item on the agenda. It is good to know that government is not always broken and that it can work as designed for we, the people. Sincerely, this is a good thing you do for the sake of democracy. You are showing that people still have a place in this democracy, including a spaced park. So, I encourage you to approve parking always under liberty. Thank you.
Well, I kind of covered a portion of my, my concern here is, does this only apply to those that come before the Board, fill out a form and speak? Does it apply to those who are coming with them? Does it apply only at the public speaking comment period? Does it apply to repetitious public speaking, which we've gotten our fair share here? Or does it apply to other public hearings where we have hundreds, thousands of people in attendance on some occasions? Does it apply to other public meetings in our building here at the CAC where there are folks attending on a regular basis? So, it's, it's, it's hard to define what is in the public interest here and what, where the gray areas are between people pushing for something in which they have an interest, legitimate ones. As we have folks down here on code enforcement cases, they often feel like they, they should not have been cited, for example, and that they're, they're coming down here for the public interest or those, those that, those that want them cited. They're like, they're coming down here now because it's a purely issue to them across a property boundary, but they feel it's a matter of concern to the whole neighborhood and that's why they're, they're preparing. So, it's, it's a hard line to draw where, where we, where we in effect subsidize the limited parking that we have available and set up clear and easily implementable rules. Maybe there's some guidance we can take from other, other local institutions. Ours are, ours is one of the biggest, however. But perhaps our facility, Mr. Phelan, who's looked at this issue, they have some experience with it. Maybe we can, maybe we can roll this out and do it, do it in a fair fashion.
Before you speak, Brahm, does your mic work?
I hope so.
It does?
Yes.
Supervisor Stone, is this meant strictly for handicapped, disabled, or is this everyone? Yeah, I had, Brahm, I was going to ask because I was confused until I clarified the Form 11 just this moment, that I, I can understand if we're going to do this for, for the disabled attending meetings here or even coming to the county. I think that was the initial discussion early, early on, to flat-out waive our parking fee when everybody else around the state is looking at their fees and keeping, you know, if you just look at the city of Riverside, what they've done in terms of creating the additional parking fees. And I don't like doing it as a generation of income by any means, but in the end, we have to receive a return as any private sector would on their parking structure. So, I cannot support this Form 11 at this point in time. But I see no further comments by members of the Board. Supervisor Ashley. Take that microphone here.
Thank you. If you have to draw a line somewhere and Supervisor Buster has shown out, I mean, this could be broadened out and if you start thinking beyond this, what I think we ought to is keep it to what it is, what was proposed by Supervisor Stone. I think he probably thought of all these things and narrowed it down. And if we want to look in and see how this works and see if we want to expand it to RCT, so RCTC meetings, WRCO and all that, that can be looked into later. I think we ought to just keep it just the way it's written and go with it. I feel somebody comes, takes the all the time and trouble to come down here to a meeting. I don't care if it's repetitious or one-time only, you know, we ought to pay for it. The people who come here to these meetings are not going to break the county. It's not going to make that much of a difference. And I think we just keep it to this, it'll work. So, I'll support the motion if you, if you make a motion.
Supervisor, okay, you have the microphone, don't you? Passing the batons here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Supervisor Buster brings up some very good points and I did think those out. If we give park waivers, if you will, parking waivers for Board of Supervisors meeting, that's going to be a hit to the general fund, which I think we'll all agree is, is going to be minimal in comparison to our $5 billion budget. I don't think it's going to hurt us. With respect to the other public meetings, I think it's up to those respective governmental agencies, WRCO, RCA, RCTC. If they want to waive those parking fees, they can, but at the expense of those governmental agencies that need to reimburse the county for those impacts. So, this is just pertaining to county board meetings. It's going to go back to staff. They're going to come up with a program that's easily implementable and I'm sure they can even give us a fiscal cost, but I think that fiscal cost will be minimal. And so, at this time, and certainly staff could consider planning commission meetings. Those are the two public meetings in the county that have the greatest attendance. And so, I'll move the park waiver program with staff to come back with a easily implementable program with minimal staff resources.
Okay, Jim, Supervisor Stone, we have a motion and a second. I have a question to clarify because I might support the motion based on, based on what you just expressed. This is for strictly Board of Supervisors meeting. How are we going to determine, how are they in the parking structure to manage the gate there, I guess? And I guess that's what you wanted to come up with. How are we going to determine that they're here for a Board meeting?
Our staff is going to come up with a program, but obviously, anybody that's here for a Board meeting or potentially a planning commission meeting, I assume would go to the clerk for a validation sticker. They would put it on their form or the ticket to go out and they'll be exempted.
Yeah, that would be our intention. We will come back to the detailed plan, absolutely. We're just, right now, we're just, I'm sorry. I'm moving the motion with a comeback to sit online basically. All right. I'll leave it in some way.
I suggest we grant Mr. Maybe and Mr. Grant lifetime, lifetime exemptions.
Mr. Maybe and Mr. Grant, you have lifetime membership, pre-membership. Britt Holstrom, I'm sure you want to come up? Okay, we're getting sophisticated now. We have three microphones so we don't have to pass the baton.
That's what I like about coming here, the humor. It's fun.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the Board what it cost last time. I mean, we had validated.
Hold the microphone down.
We had validated parking for quite some years. And that's before I whacked out my spine and my knees, so I didn't really use that because I was using other parking lot. But we have figures somewhere that tells us how much it cost then. I don't know what the limitations were, but we did validate, we did have validations as we pulled out. We present that. Look up those figures and let's learn from that. I don't know whether it covered other meetings because I never used it for that, but that could, you know, help us. I know this though, that once we didn't validate it, all my senior friends out in the county to my new stopped coming, which was a very sad situation because they were not, not participating in the issues that came up. And I think we need to keep them participating. You can only do so much by telephone. I know because I use it all the time. I would like to see validation, probably not as broad-based as the gentleman Paul was describing. I might try to go with your proposal, Mr. Stone, that the other agencies cover the run when they schedule it because you can't cover the whole burden. But this venue right here, the Board of Supervisors, I think is the last place we go to when we don't like all the other meetings. So, they have a recourse. If they don't like theirs, they come back here. They get a validated sticker, they tell them how bad they did, right? So, no, cover this venue and we will be very, very grateful. In terms of now, I do, I have a marker that says I'm difficult in walking, so I can park in handicap parking spaces. But if you come after 8 o'clock, my friends, not a chance. You're not going to be able to park there. So, and of course, we can't cover the whole parking lot with handicap parking, right? Because nobody comes here except us who have challenges. So, we have a few problems to still work out, but I look forward to some validated parking. Thank you.